I'd like to call the October 20th Board of Commissioners meeting, just to order. And first thing is invocation and pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Scott Efron.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us bow. Our great family father, we humbly come to you tonight just thanking you once again for this beautiful day. And thank you so much for the county that we live in. Thank you so much for the state that we live in and the country we live in. Lord, we just pray that we remain one nation under God. Thank you so much for everyone here tonight. Thank you so much for our workers, our county workers, our fire, our EMS, our police that protect and serve us daily, and our military and their family for the sacrifices they make. Lord, I pray for strength and wisdom in the decisions we make for the county. And these things I ask in your presence name do we pray? Amen.
If y'all would stand and do the...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Efron.
Yes, sir.
Next on the list is the approval or adjustments to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would make a motion that we remove item 6.1, the CR-25-05 rezoning case from the agenda tonight, sir.
I have a motion pulled. I have a second. All in favor? Motion passes 7-0. Pull 6.1 from the agenda. And next thing on this list is a public comment. And I have one person signed up, Kevin Myers from Richfield. If he'd like to come forward now.
I have handouts for the commissioners if you don't mind my approach. I'm a board director for North Carolina Trappers Association. What I'm requesting is that the board consider adopting a resolution approving the change to the Stanley County's fox trapping season. State of North Carolina is unique in that the North Carolina Wildlife Resource Commission doesn't have regulatory authority to set the seasons for hunting or trapping of fox. The North Carolina General Assembly back in the 70s, 60s, and 70s kept that within the state to regulate those seasons. Since over the past 40 years, the regulatory changes have implemented some 27 different hunting seasons in 89 counties and 23 different fox trapping seasons in 55 counties in the state of North Carolina. Regulatory authority with the state has caused the state or forced the state to produce a fox hunting and trapping regulation digest similar to the one that's 21 pages, similar to the one that they pass out for all the hunting and fishing regulations. Currently in Stanley County, the fox trapping season is from January the 2nd through January the 31st. That was done back in the 70s, I believe, maybe early 80s is when that season was established. And what we have been doing, the Trappers Association's been doing, going county by county to try and get a standardized season throughout the state in the counties that will allow a fox trapping season. Stanley County does have fox trapping. Trapping goes on. The regulated trapping season starts October the 1st and runs through the end of February. There is trapping going on in Stanley County, but if we catch a fox, regardless of the condition of that fox, we have to release it if we're outside of January the 2nd to January the 31st. And it's not based on science. That regulated season has nothing to do with the population or anything like that. There's harvestable population in the state and most of the surrounding counties to include Roan, Davidson, Cabarrus, and Montgomery all have the standardized trapping season for fox that runs from October the 1st to February the 28th. And we're just asking that Stanley County change their fox trapping season to coincide with those. Have any questions?
So what else is trapable from fox?
All the other fur-bearing species in the state of North Carolina, coyote, fox, or coyote, raccoon, possum, bobcat, river otter, skunk, every other fur-bearing animal. And it would simplify it for the enforcement officers too because they have to look at this digest every time they come across somebody trapping fox to see if there's a fox trapping season in that county and when it is. And it allows us that are trapping coyotes, doing predator management for customers in Stanley County, like I'm doing predator work right now, and if I catch a fox, I have to release that fox. I can't keep it. I can't utilize that resource.
Mr. Myers, I'm sorry, I'm not a hunter or a trapper, but...
Yes, sir.
When you catch a fox during the fox season, what's done with it? And is it just because it's predator or do you...
No.
You do something with it?
I utilize the fur.
Right, okay.
Or it can be sold alive. They have running pins in the eastern part of the state and throughout the state that you, they release the fox in and they run them with dogs, not directly. I mean, they have escape habitat and everything. It's highly regulated. The dogs don't kill. It's kind of like a rabbit hunt, but bigger game.
So all we would do, all need to do is just do a resolution that we're going to extend it?
No, you have to do a resolution asking our legislative delegation to change it at the state level because it's, Stanley County's governed by the General Assembly. So you'd have to get it changed by the General Assembly.
This is just the first step.
So currently, if you were to catch a fox and it's October, then it's hurt because it got hurt when you trapped it, you still have to release it and then you're in a predicament.
I'm in an ethical dilemma.
Right.
Okay, you've got a couple of questions. Okay, Stanley County is October the 15th through March the 1st. Is that what the season is now?
I'm sorry?
October 15th through March 1st. That's the season. October 15th, general season, March 1st. Is that...
No.
Is that the season?
No.
Okay.
The North Carolina trapping season for all other fur-bearing animals is October the 1st through February, the end of February. If it's leap year, it's February 29th. If Stanley County's fox trapping season is January the 2nd through January the 31st.
And you can only keep a daily limit of two foxes?
I'm not sure if it has a daily limit in Stanley or not, but I have a regulation digest that'll help us.
And I'm looking at...
No, it's a season limit of 10.
Yeah, and two per day.
No daily limit.
No?
No. I have a digest if you'd like.
I thought you might know. Are these gray foxes or red foxes?
Either.
Okay.
Red foxes aren't native to the United States or North America.
I'm sorry, red foxes are what?
Are not native to North America. They came from England. Gray foxes are the only native species of fox in the state of North Carolina.
Can you use electronic collars to call foxes?
I don't know. I'm not a hunter. I'm a trapper.
I thought you... You're just a trapper?
I hunt, but I don't hunt foxes with calls or coyotes. I know you can use them for coyotes, but I don't think you can use them for foxes.
And you mentioned that you can sell them for profit?
Either the fur. I'm a fur buyer. I buy fur from other trappers. I process it, have it tanned, and I sell either the fur itself or make garments or make items out of the fur to sell.
I know that we, I hunt, and whenever we had, say, horns or other furs, I know the wildlife had told us that it was a problem for us to be making profit off of wildlife because it was a sportsman. And if we get into that, sometimes it's just like commercial fishing where you have people that go out and fish for fun and hunt for fun, but then if you get into the commercial line of it, you know, it could be a problem. I didn't know you could sell foxes live. That's new to me. Can you sell rabbits and...
Yeah, actually, you can sell rabbits to running pins, yeah. It's highly regulated. The pin operators have a specific license. They're inspected annually where the state goes out and inspects their facilities to make sure that they're, meet their regulations.
So I can kill a whitetail deer and take the meat and sell it?
No, you cannot.
Okay. What's the difference in rabbits and deer?
That's a question for the Wildlife Commission. I mean, fur has been sold from the 1800s, huh? I mean, that's...
I understand the fur.
Been part of it.
I didn't know you could sell the meat.
You can sell raccoon meat. I don't think you can sell any other meat.
I know you don't eat fox. I've tried it. It's not, it's not good.
It's not very palatable.
Yeah.
Andy, what could we do about getting this on the agenda for November for a resolution?
Jenny's actually already created a resolution, a draft resolution.
She's already got one created?
She's already developed one. So if we wanted one, we could just put it on the November agenda if that's what the board's direction is, yeah.
So we, we have that motion to do this?
No, you just direct us to put it on the November agenda. That's, if any commissioner could ask, tell us to put it on the...
If we have a consent, we'll just do that then.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. We'll get this on the November agenda then.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is item 6.2, a resolution authorizing a purchase under North Carolina General Statute 14-234-D1. Presenter, Mr. Andy Lucas.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recuse myself from this, if you don't mind.
I have a request for... Thank you. Do I have a second? Got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The item before you is to authorize a resolution for the purchase with a commissioner under North Carolina General Statute 14-234-D1. The airport is seeking to purchase a SCAG rear discharge mower. The airport has another SCAG mower and it's held up very well to the specific conditions they have out there at the airport where they have a large facility, a lot of volume of grass mowing. And also, you don't want a side discharge mower out there because then you're going to have to hire somebody or have more staff to blow all the grass back off the taxiway and the runway. So the rear discharge is really a huge benefit. And my understanding is there's only two models that have the rear discharge at the, the type of spec that they're looking for. One is a John Deere and one's a SCAG, and the SCAG's more affordable. And so the only SCAG dealership in Stanley County is owned and operated by Commissioner King. And so the general statutes do allow for a small jurisdiction exemption for purchases under $60,000 where a city or town in that county is $20,000 or less, which we would qualify for. This was changed a few years ago. It used to be $15,000, so we weren't able to take advantage of it because Albemarle was always larger than $15,000. Now that it's been bumped up to $20,000, we are able to take advantage of the small jurisdiction exemption. If the board approves the resolution, then we also have to, we have to chart those expenses. We have to publish them, and they have to actually go in our audit as well. And so there's a lot of transparency requirements per the general statute. But the first step is the board would, must approve a resolution authorizing the purchase. And then the staff will take care of the additional records and making sure that that information is in the audit to meet the transparency requirements. And I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
It's my understanding the SCAG mower is $17,337.21. Do we have the amount that the John Deere would have cost?
I don't have that amount, but I was told by Randy Schenck at the airport that it was more expensive.
Okay, so we're saving money...
We are.
By buying the SCAG and it's the preferred mower?
Yep. They've had very good success with the SCAG mower they currently have out there.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Andy, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt the resolution approving a contract between the Stanley County Airport Authority and Commissioner Brandon King.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Efron and a second by Commissioner Mills. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Next on the agenda is the American Rescue Plan Grant Project Ordinance Amendment and corresponding budget amendments. Presenter's Andy Lucas.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This board's taken action in the past to approve a project ordinance with all the different projects we funded with American Rescue Plan dollars, and it had a specific number associated with that. Obviously, we can't go over that obligation amount because that 12.199 million is all we're going to get. But when we put these budgets together, you know, they're sort of estimates of what the total projects cost, and some come in a little higher, some come in a little lower. Well, in the case of Meadow Creek, it was a little more, $4,751 more than what was actually in the budget ordinance and so, but we were far less than that on the Stony Gap project. And so we want to move money from the Stony Gap project to the Meadow Creek project so that our expenses don't exceed the obligations for that specific project. And so that's what this budget, this series of budget amendments will do is to get that back in line, and that'll allow me then to go in and do the quarterly reporting so that the expenses don't exceed the obligations. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. We'll probably have a couple more of these as we get closer to December 31st, 2026, as we... Stony Gap still has a few things lingering and so, but I do think there's still going to be extra money in that project that we can, will likely move hopefully to the West Stanley Waste Water Treatment Plant project so we can mitigate as much possible there without taking more of a loan. So there will be, I do envision us having to do a couple more of these before December 31st. Obviously, we're not, we can't go over the 12.199 million change, but this will just balance it between those projects.
Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we can approve the grant project ordinance amendment and the corresponding budget amendments.
I have a motion by Commissioner Crump and a second by Commissioner Vice Chair King. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 7-1, 7-0, excuse me. All right, the consent agenda is next on the list. I have a question myself about the airport North Hanger site development. Do you have anything on that?
Yeah, so let me, I'm working my way to that specific item. Yeah, so it looks like that's a two-part amendment where they're moving money from a transportation reserve fund into the actual project fund. So there's actually two funds there. There's a transportation reserve fund, and Toby's here and he can probably answer the question better than I if I haven't answered it correctly, but it looks like they're just moving funding from a reserve fund into the... moving funding from a reserve fund into the actual project fund. And that way, well, now that's in a project fund, it can be a multi-year fund, so, but... Well, yeah, we collect all that interest too, and that'll, all that interest will, the, the interest that we're collecting that's sitting in the reserve fund will eventually move, move into the project fund as well. But, um, that will, the project fund will allow us then to, um, if, if the expenses go into next fiscal year, it won't be an issue because it's in a project fund versus a, in the, in the general fund or a, a special reserve fund. So I believe that's the reason why Toby moved that money out of that reserve fund into the project fund so we could, and to align the specific expenses associated with the project with the funding, so.
All right.
Is that, is that accurate? Is that a fair thing?
All right, sounds good. Uh, what is the, um, wish of the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lawhan. Just have a second.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair King. All right. Oh, print. Okay. But Commissioner, uh, Hatley, and all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven oh. All right. Now we're going down to, uh, the board comments, announcements, committee reports. Uh, I'd like to start on the right with, uh, Commissioner Crump.
No comment tonight.
Mr. Hatley?
Last year, I mean, Chairman Mills?
No comment.
Mr. Lawhan, I was gonna pause there for a second.
You know I have a comment. Yeah, uh, before I give you the housing numbers, I wanna talk about the last two weeks. Uh, two weeks ago, it will be two weeks this Thursday, I believe. The new trade facility out at Stanley Community College was open house, uh, for people to view. It was also the naming of that particular building that's known now as the Brown Building. A very impressive building with the trade, different trades that are being taught. Have a tremendous CNC machine shop, have, uh, heavy equipment which has simulators that you could simulate how to drive a bulldozer. Be fun to go out there sometime and try those simulators. Also electrical, HVAC, um, construction, building, just a lot of different things. A good addition to the community college, and that building is state of the art. And then last week, not sure what day it was, it was kind, was it Thursday?
Last Tuesday.
Tuesday. It's been a few, it's been almost a week. Uh, we were, I was, uh, privileged to be able to go out to the North Carolina Emergency Management Training Center, which is something else. I think it costs like eighty-seven million dollars to build, but it gives the people that are in EMS the right to train, uh, flash flood type training, uh, crashed airplane type training with fire. It's just a real impressive demonstration that was given. I would say that there were probably, phew, I bet there were a thousand people out there last week.
It was about three hundred and fifty.
It looked like a thousand to me. It was a big crowd. But, uh, if, if you get a chance right out by the airport, go past the airport, go like you're going toward the prison, which is on the right side of the road, and not far past the prison on the left side of the road would be the North Carolina Emergency Management Training Center. What does that mean for Stanley County? It means that there will be a lot of people coming to Stanley County to train. They'll be eating at local restaurants, be staying at hotels, be hopefully buying goods from our different stores, but there will be a generation of sales tax from that particular entity. But very impressive. Now, let me get to the, uh, meat on the table, so to speak, and that is new home permits. January through September twenty twenty-five, new home permits issued by Stanley County, four hundred and two, which is a decrease of only four. So, um, good numbers. Value, permit value, a hundred and thirty-one point one nine three million. It's an increase of forty-two point oh two million, forty-seven percent increase. Average permit value per home is three hundred and twenty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars. Not quite to the amount that we need to cover all services, but getting closer. But, uh, good construction going on in Stanley County. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Go, Mr. Eifert.
Thank you, sir. Um, October thirty-first, there'll be the Fall Festival there in Locust. It's put on by a lot of the churches. There's probably, if you go by Bill's estimates, probably ten thousand people there, but there's usually about three thousand. Uh, but it's a good way to save trick-or-treat, and, um, a lot of, a lot of good things are going on. I think Oak Birds is the twenty-sixth. They're having their fall festival and their trunk-or-treat for their kids, so come on out and enjoy that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Eifert. I was gonna touch base on a few things. Uh, I wasn't able to go to the trades facility meeting 'cause I was fortunate enough to, uh, get to go tour the ark in Kentucky, and I was very impressed with that. Uh, I think it's, it's worth the time for anybody to go out and check it out. It's a pretty nice exhibit. Also, uh, the, uh, American Racing Hitters had their car show in open house Saturday, and I went out and attended that, and Nick, the owner, gave me a little tour of the backside of the place, and, uh, I just wanted to pass on to everybody that he is, he told me a couple of times that he is very happy to be in Stanley County. So, and that's all I have. Seek a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner Mills?
Second. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Patty.
Second, second, uh, Commissioner Crump. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven oh.